We'll call the meeting to order for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator as well. Please stand for pledge. We will start with our Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan is absent, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting held Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, B being the call for a meeting and set Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote. Did you have a comment?
Is there an item we can comment on?
If you have a specific...
Item B?
Item B. It has to be very specific.
Item B, is it on the agenda so we can comment it or not?
It is.
Larry Stewart, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Good morning. Before you do that, I'd like to give you some input from a citizen's standpoint that ought to be considered before you do your business on August 6th. I might be one of those that you deny, but I'd like to tell you something about the process that needs to be discussed. This is just a small part of what I attempt to discuss with my personal appraiser, so-called personal appraiser, which they didn't want to hear. Last week I asked for maybe an additional minute, which is your prerogative, but you chose not to. So I'll probably run out of time, but what I'm going to say real quickly here then is, when I took my comparables that you told me were comparables, and I drove around the neighborhood and I even stopped short of knocking on their door and looking in their backyards, but I made a list of all those, and then I went home and went onto the website for the assessor, and I checked all these properties. Not one of those properties had been listed as a comparable property. I found that very interesting. That's all right here. And most of those were well over the price of my properties. So it's not really a comparable list. So you need to find a different process for that also. And setting it based on what my neighbor up the street sold his house for two weeks ago, or two months ago, not fair, because maybe that guy sold to an out-of-state person that paid a pretty high price, did a quick cleanup, and sold it for a little bit higher price, didn't pay any property tax. That's a state problem, okay? Fighting for us? Are you asking them to change that? This gentleman can help do that. The other thing I found was the market area is up for discussion depending on who wrote the sentence or who wrote the law. You need to get that perspective from the citizens. This goes back to last week and then I'm done. I mostly like what I hear, Mike Friend, but you people do not listen to the people that are in this room. That was what I was talking about, Mr. Friend. You can talk to the people on the phone and in emails all you want, but these venues are for you to talk with the citizens of your county, to get input from us directly. If you want to comment about me, do so, please, at the microphone, not after I sat down. I watched the tape and I listened. You did make a reference to me, but everything you said was negating what I suggested would improve this body, and that is to listen and talk back and forth. But you refuse to do it? That's a possible violation of Open Meetings Act, and I do not sue you on it because...
Larry, we need to stick to the topic of certified assessments.
Because I don't want your meetings to negate it, your decisions to negate it. I don't disagree with all of them, okay? But you don't work for them, you work for us.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Kavanaugh, do you have a comment?
As long as we're on this, I want to commend people for going out and doing their research, as we just heard, you know, looking around at your own comparables. This is an imperfect system. It's not an exact science, and we're always trying to make it better because it impacts so many people. Just one example, I got a call from a constituent yesterday about a similar question, and the protest process, and I wasn't able to answer everything, so I referred him to the clerk, Dan Esch, and he called him. First of all, he asked me, "Well, will he be there? It's almost 4:00." And I said, "Yeah, he works till 4:30 at least," and he was kind of shocked by that. And I called him, I talked to Dan this morning, and Dan spoke to him and walked him through this, and you're going to hear some more in a little bit about people whose protests are before us today. This is an important thing for us, but it's an all hands on deck thing. So we do listen to the people who employ us, and we work for you, so we're very sensitive to your reactions. We have good people from the clerk on down to the Register of Deeds office. Mr. Goodwilly, I'm sure, will be up front here today in just a little bit to talk about some of this. And I encourage everybody to participate in this because the more help we have, the better the system will be. It's not perfect. It'll never be perfect, but we do the best we can. So, thank you, and I'd like to thank the Board of Equalization and our staff, Catherine Hall and the folks there who work as hard as they can to make it as good as they can. And you're going to hear more about this. We're in the tax season, so thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. All right, we do have a motion and second. We'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next item of business are resolutions for Board of Equalization, items C, D, and E. We were told there might be commentary on E, but was there anybody here for any of these resolutions, C, D, or E? Otherwise, we could potentially vote in block. All right, motion to approve, C, D, E, and adjourn by Rogers, second by Friend. Mr. Clerk, did you have a comment?
I just, Dan Esch, Douglas County Clerk, just wanted to make sure there wasn't somebody in the audience who addressed 24617 West Center Road.
Looks like not, so we can... Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, I just have one question. This is an informational one. Mr. Goodwilly, if you could, on item E, which are a series of evaluations of real property that had valuation protests reviewed by the Board of Equalization referees, but also had pending reports of destroyed real property scheduled for consideration. If you could, Mr. Goodwilly, there's, I don't know, seven or eight properties here, and one of them, most of these are dismissed. The changes that they've requested are dismissed, but one of them has a change, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review this or have any familiarity with this information.
Well, it's not our item. It's from the clerk's office. My understanding of this item is these are all folks who protested their value sort of prior to submitting a claim for their destroyed real property. So what you've got are two different processes going. The values that are getting protested to the county board are the value that existed on the property as of January 1, the assessment date. And then there's a second batch of properties that were damaged in the tornado who have filed for a reduction based on that. And so I think what Dan is doing, and I don't want to put words in my mouth, is he's clearing the deck on these protests of the value that existed on January 1st, so that next week he can bring to you the reductions that are getting recommended due to the tornado damage. And I do see Dan and Catherine Hall from our staff on here for the BOE, and I don't know if you'd like to comment on this at all. The reason I bring it up is that this particular item is an item where there was a change.
Okay.
And there was a reduction in the valuation. And I point this out because this is a process that's ongoing, and will probably have some more changes before it's completely done, but it requires people, I think, in this case, to actually request a change. Is that right?
Sure. These are all, these are all just regular, for lack of a better term, garden variety protests. You get your valuation notice at the end of May, you file your protest with the BOE during the month of June, and you're protesting the value for that year that reflects what was on the property as of 1/1 of 2024. So that's what these are.
And this is the process in action. So it's a good idea, I think, for everybody to understand that we are very, very sensitive to people's protests of the valuations, and we take a look at them, we take them seriously. In this case, there's a reduction of, I don't know, $85,000, more or less, and that's an important thing to note because we're going to come up on a bunch more of these in very near future.
Sure.
Thank you. I don't know if Dan or Catherine have anything to add, but...
Just Dan Esch, Douglas County Clerk, on this one, the 65, the one that's actually getting a change. So I think for the other, there's eight properties on this list. In general, I mean, without going into every single one of them, in general, it's the same situation. I think the referee agrees there was damage done, but it was all done after January 1 of 2024. This, if you notice this address, I was trying to look up the reasoning, but I'm pretty certain this was one not due to tornado damage. It was like just a fire that happened. But the reason why the referee recommended a change to which January 1, 2024 value was because this person submitted some comparables that the referee found compelling and reduced its original 2024 value, if you will, to $230,000. So next week, excuse me, next week, when there's a, when you take up the Form 425, basically the reduction then will be off of this new value of $230,000 instead of $290,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on the resolutions? Otherwise, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
That concludes Board of Equalization. We will now jump into Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan is absent, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items 1A and B, A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, B, the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll jump into our consent agenda, items A through H. Do I have a motion and second for discussion? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Any commentary on consent agenda? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Record, and I see Mark LaFleur is here. Mark, if you could for a second, just for the record. On item A, contract extension between Douglas County and Children's Specialty Physicians, this is a Douglas County Youth Center item. Could you just briefly tell us what this is providing for, Mark?
Sure. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center. It's good to see you. This is our contract that takes care of our medical director at the youth center, which is required under policy. And this takes, is our pediatric nurse, I mean pediatric doctor, who maintains our youth at the youth center.
And this is to provide medical services for the children in our care. Is that correct?
Correct, in our care, and to also provide connectors if there's additional services needed.
And what is the population of the youth center today?
Today, we have 85, 77 young men and eight females.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Any other commentary on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next, we have recognitions and proclamations. We have one item under this section, item A, recognition of the following county employee retired, James Buddha, who I do not believe is here today. We acknowledge that he is retiring after 26 years of dedicated service at the Douglas County Assessor/Register of Deeds Office and Department, so we give thanks to Mr. Buddha for his service to Douglas County citizens. With that, motion and second to approve the recognition? Motion by Borgeson, second by Rogers.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll move forward to our presentation today, a presentation on the Fitness Court concept with the National Fitness Campaign. We have Mr. Kent Holm from Environmental Services.
Good morning, Commissioner Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Wanted to give you a little bit of conceptual, excuse me, something, just... Let's go back. I bumped something. Give you a little context to start with. Back a year and a half or so ago, I was out by public properties to develop an internal circulation plan for pedestrians and so on at the West Campus. And so, with apologies for my kind of scribbling on an aerial here, what you see in this drawing are some red lines which represent potential future trails and sidewalk connections, and the green ones that show existing sidewalk connections there. And then you see a yellow line down here at the lower part of the screen representing kind of the sections A, B, and C. Happy to say that we completed that, contractor completed that a week or so ago. So we now have a nice connection between the southwest corner of the Fitz Building over to 156, which gives access over to all of the services that are over there. It also provides a better connection to the residential neighborhoods to the south. So it's a good piece to start with there. So as part of this, and Commissioner Borgeson brought to my attention last year, an AARP, American Association of Retired Persons, grant opportunity, a challenge grant opportunity, which would have potentially given us the ability to put maybe some fitness stations along some of these trails and sidewalks. Unfortunately, we didn't get anything with that grant, but in doing some further research, I've found another concept which really, I think, it's a different kind of concept, but I wanted to give you a little bit of a preview today. And then what I'm asking is, you know, do you like this concept? Is this something that we could potentially go forward with and explore a little bit more and see if we could potentially make this happen? So I'm going to show you just the first part of this video, and I think it's going to be pretty self-explanatory, and then I'll address some questions after.
We're changing the way America thinks about fitness. From college campuses to city parks and trails, we're bringing free fitness everywhere, and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managid, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. The National Fitness Campaign was founded in 1979 when we opened the first Fitness Court. Redesigned for the 21st century, the Fitness Court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven-movement, seven-minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout. Easy or hard, it will work for you. Our goal is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganders, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the Fitness Court was such an attraction to us. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy, that they want to provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes, challenges, and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new digital wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on the Fitness Court. Learn the moves and take challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled. Introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness court, using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness court. We're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for healthy infrastructure. We're bringing fitness courts to within 10 minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparounds.
How do I get back to the, I just click, here we go. Okay. So that was a little bit about the fitness concept, the fitness court concept. One of the things that they do, as they mentioned kind of at the last here, is there's partnerships with, and a lot of the partnerships for these that have been installed around the country are with healthcare providers. Blue Cross Blue Shield is one of the big ones. There are none of these in Nebraska yet, but Blue Cross Blue Shield sponsors these and contributes to the program in a lot of other different states. So that's one thing that I think would be applicable here. Our healthcare provider is Blue Cross Blue Shield. That seems potentially like a natural fit there, and identifying some others that might be interested in the concept. So this just shows kind of what it is. It's really based on body weight, and again, as they said in the video, really, it's for anyone, any age, any physical ability, and so on. And one of the other nice things is there's very minimal amount of moving parts to this. So the maintenance is less. They estimate that the maintenance on a court like this is $500 or less. It's kind of power washing it, checking regularly on any moving parts and making those changes accordingly. So here you can kind of see a breakdown of what this cost over, just for the fitness court part of it. And one of the things that the program does, it does provide like a $30,000 grant. And, you know, one of the things, you know, in terms of, there isn't a match requirement per se, but if we were to go forward with this, I would recommend, and certainly the folks in the program recommend too, that there be some money from the county involved in this to help match that grant amount. But the rest of it would all be intended to be private-funded. You'd see some different kind of cost breakdowns here, and depending on kind of what, you know, if you wanted to do things with the art, if you wanted to do some other things like, and I'm going to slip over here, they also have a partnership with a company that has canopies that can be placed over it and so on. And when I go back to this, there's also a concept where they add a studio, which is basically just a mirror image on the other side, doesn't have any equipment on it, but this would be, to Chairman Garcia's point, this is where Patrick would be teaching the Zumba classes. So, okay, they didn't go over well with Patrick, so, yeah, okay. Well, my performance evaluation just got lowered a couple bit, but oh, well, I'll deal with that later. So obviously, the costs go up a little bit. It would be, if that concept, both the fitness court and the studio, were what you wanted to go for, it is more economical to do it all at the same time as opposed to adding a studio on later. So in terms of where potentially would this go on West Campus, I put an arrow here. I think that's a very logical location, which is very visible to people coming in and out of the facility. It's right adjacent to the visitor parking lot, and that would be, I guess, if you were looking for a recommendation from me on where to put it, it would be right there. And we would adjust some of the connections, sidewalk connections, to connect to it. So the next steps here, one, I just really need to know if there's interest in moving forward with it, and if there is, then we'll do some more due diligence. I know I have, I have looped in Matt Munt, our risk manager, with some discussions about the liability for it and so on. I'll have a more extended conversation with the county attorney's office to flesh through all of those particular concerns, and we would have bring back a resolution for your consideration here in the future. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kent. Appreciate it. For context, when Kent sent me a video on the concept, there's people like shaking it and stuff, so I said I would only agree to the court if Patrick became our Zumba instructor. So that's still a contingency of mine. Commissioner Boyle?
So thanks for this, Kent. I, of course, completely support anything that's fitness-related. The only question, or the biggest question I have is, it seems like this is something that, the project sounds like it'd be relatively specific to that location. In my mind, I see this as something that would be more useful for citizens if it really did go towards population centers instead of a campus location. I know 156 in Maple is an area that people would come to. So, but I think some type of coordination maybe with city parks and rec might be a place to really get something like this going. But it's a great concept. I would love to see it. I'm just thinking about going to a place where use would be automatic in a different setting.
Okay.
So any comments?
All very valid points, yes. And I think the folks in the program would concur with that. You know, they want to see maximum usage
Yeah, exactly.
of the facility. I know one of the things that they will also do if you show interest in or moving forward, they start looking at some feasibility things, where, you know, what's the feasibility of connecting to other population centers? I know one of the things that's missing from West Campus is a bus route. And so that's certainly on my agenda. I would like to see a dedicated bus route there, especially to help, you know, for the other services that are provided out there. The Health Center Campus would also be, I mean, there's a spot there that probably would work pretty well for this as well.
I do appreciate you bringing this forward. Like I said, if anything we can do to increase physical fitness and activity is, it's brilliant. I mean, it's an absolute need, and we'd have to incorporate that and to make it more accessible to everyone. So to have something free with real equipment, it's like, you can't beat that. So thanks for bringing it forward. I've never, I'd not heard of this before. This is great.
You're welcome. You know, the other thing is, it does fit with the county's push for our wellness program and being available in addition for our employees and so on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. You're aware that, if you could bring back the overview of the campus, that when we recently refurbished the West Campus, we put in a fitness facility right about where your icon is right now. Is that in use for...
Yes.
Okay. My concern is that... My concern is that, you know, we're not in the fitness business. I, you know, have worked out at, Field Club has a fitness center, I pay dues for that. I belong to Genesis, which has fitness centers all across the city. I pay dues for that. Are you advocating that we go into the fitness business here?
No.
That this was for non-county employees? This is for the public?
This would be for anybody, anybody and everybody.
I'm just trying to get it clear, because it doesn't sound like something that we do, and there's a lot of people who are in the fitness business out there. The other thing is, when I work out, I work out inside, particularly now, and this appears to be an outside facility.
Correct.
How do you do that in 100-degree weather or 10 below zero weather?
Well, in those situations, you wouldn't, most likely.
Gotcha. The idea of everybody being fit, I think is a good one. I'm just not sure that it's something that Douglas County is in the business of doing for the general public, and, you know, coming at a time maybe when the legislature's in special session, discussing what we do and how we spend our money, I'm not sure that putting a public fitness center into a campus where we already have a fitness center for our own employees might be the best timing in the world. I'm just saying, this isn't a bad idea from a fitness point of view. You know, I pay good money to have fitness facilities for me and my family, and I think a lot of people do. But I think it takes some more thought relative to this particular proposal. And also, and it'd probably be something that I'd be interested in following up on, the use of the existing fitness facility in this, is that available to everybody on the campus there?
My understanding is it's available to all the employees there.
Including the Sheriff's Department?
I believe so.
Okay, because we've had some talks about them having difficulty accessing that, and obviously, the Sheriff's Department of all of our employees needs to be fit to do their job. So, I'd be interested in addressing maybe that as part of this initiative going forward, is how can we maximize the use of what we spent, and I can get you the exact number, a pretty good chunk of change on, just a couple of years ago, to establish in this exact building that you're talking about, and see maybe if this could be part of that to enhance the availability of those services for the people on the campus, and whether or not it's equitably used by everybody on the campus, and particularly the sheriff's deputies. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Kent, for this, and I'm excited about further conversation on this. Again, it's geared, while we have a campus of employees, it is geared for the public use, and as we build the trail, this was just a part of, or in addition to, the trails that we are building. And I think that we would be able to engage several private sector folks, healthcare folks, besides Blue Cross Blue Shield, in partnering with this, on this with us. So, I'm excited to further the conversation, and it could just be one of many throughout the different quadrants of the county that we look at for public use. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kent, thanks for the information. It's a, it goes without saying, it's a really intriguing concept. I agree with my colleagues. I do, under the circumstances of all the things we're dealing with in our world right now, it's, I'm wondering if we're getting, potentially getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but that being said, we're talking about infrastructure, maybe 165, anywhere from 160 to $165,000 to get this thing done. Potentially, you know, $30,000 worth of grant money, potentially, I think that's what was alluded to. And then, certain, and Commissioner Borgeson alluded to this, certain public-private partnerships that could drill into the anticipated percent of the entire cost. What do we think, what do we anticipate? Has it been done in other jurisdictions? What do we anticipate the county output would end up being after all of these things occurred? So, in other words, if Blue Cross said, "No, no, no, I don't want to hang Blue Cross out." Let's say a corporate sponsor said, "Yeah, we'll take the whole thing." There's probably liability issues and all kinds of other things that the county's going to have to be responsible for, but the bottom line is the bottom-line dollar, right? So, in other jurisdictions, has it been done where the county didn't outlay, or the governmental subdivision didn't outlay any money, and it was simply on the back end that we're providing space?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can get the answer for that.
Yeah, we'll talk about it later. I mean, because, look, and certainly not going to go down this ideological rat hole too deep, I, this is not a critical, this is not something county govern, I don't, I would have difficulty working with my colleagues to say, "Sure, let's earmark $100,000 for this." So, the discussion needs to continue, but again, timing, in politics, policy, and everything else, timing is pretty important. That's the first thing. Second thing is, when we lean back after all of that dust settles, and we say, "We're going to commit X amount of money to X, Y, and Z," heck, a week and a half ago, I'm talking about enjoying the idea that we're going to start making cut, not enjoying it, but we'd be prepared to cut. I'd be prepared to cut. Tough timing, I guess. But that being said, that stuff is fascinating. That stuff is needed. We've got, the United States, I think I saw a statistic the other day, that 42% of Americans are, you know, obese or have critical, you know, health issues because of sedentary behavior, at least one of the aspects of it. So, certainly needed. The question is, should the county be, you know, drilling down as deep as we possibly could into stuff like this? But anyway, just some thoughts. Mr. Chair, thanks for the time.
Thank you. Just brief commentary on my end. I do like the idea of approaching city parks to see if there's any synergy there as well, and then between both sides, maybe contemplating where would be the best urban placement for maximal use, if such a concept were to come to fruition here in Douglas County slash Omaha. It also takes it in the direction of more public use than internal, because if it is more for our employees, then I would want to know, like, is this something they're actually asking for, before we even like just give it, you know? Because if it's not, then, you know, then maybe we should focus more on the public side of things. As somebody who likes to work out, I know that, you know, you always got a timeout, like, you can't just go work out at 11:00 a.m. or 12:00 p.m., because then you got to plan, like, having to shower after, and do you have time to shower? Is there a shower accessible? So, you know, this may not be something they can just go jump into in the middle of a workday. But, you know, having it be a public kind of utility, so to speak, that they can just use for free is an interesting concept, especially if we were able to maximize use somewhere along, you know, Eugene Lehee Mall, along the riverfront, you know, somewhere where there's always a lot of people jogging and wanting to work out. That might be interesting to explore. It also might take it less into the hands of the county and more into a partnership with other partners, if there's any concerns for liability, if anybody potentially getting injured, hurting an ankle, you know, or anything like that, while using the court. But I do think it merits some further conversation, so thank you for bringing it to our attention.
You're welcome. And Commissioner, just kind of a final comment. My saying $30,000 for a county deal was simply, okay, if they're going to give us a grant for $30,000 for this, then, they're, kind of their words, that shows that the county has some skin in the game, and when you're going out to ask for donations, then they, the people you're going to see, that you've got some skin in the game. If we could go to someplace and they'd say, "Hey, just, we'll fund the whole thing," great, and the county doesn't have any money into it, and we're just, yeah, we're providing the space, we're providing, yeah. Having heard the comments, I will have some conversations with city parks, and we'll kind of see, you know, where some of that conversation might go. But anything, any other direction that you'd like to give me at this point?
Yeah, we do have Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this also, as we continue, may enhance the request for the ARPA grant, you know, as we look at that again in the next round that they're going to do. This may be helpful in, again, kind of clarifying or getting a little bit more detail of what our concept was originally. So, anyway, again, I just think it's worth the conversation. I agree that, you know, the timing kind of stinks because we don't know what the state's going to do, but in my opinion, that doesn't stop us from talking. It doesn't stop us from looking at things that would enhance the quality of life for our citizens of Douglas County. And so, I hope that we at least continue to look at it and see what other opportunities are out there for funding for us to take a look at, and maybe another grants besides the ARPA grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Larry, on the Fitness Court?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I forgot to bring my trash bag today, but this is another one of those things that, you know, I didn't hear anything about this. Excuse me, but didn't you not used to have C attached on your agenda items, so we could find out something about what was going to be talked about? I don't think we can provide everything for everybody. I can't afford it. Even if it's grant money, it's coming from somebody's tax dollars. Don't you get it? Family Fathers didn't intend an all-for-one, one-for-all government. Yeah, they left certain things up to you, but that didn't necessarily mean that you do all this for everybody except me. Equality? You can't be equal to everybody, so stop trying. You don't have the money. We didn't ask for this. You did not ask the citizens for input on this. Why? Because it's a national grant program or a national association? Let's stop trying to fix everything that you can't fix. There's all kinds of money being spent already on national trails, local trails, Douglas County trails. I drove around the Lake Cunningham area yesterday. Wide open spaces, nobody out there exercising, but you're going to build a place for them to all go to? Why don't they join Mr. Kavanaugh down at the club? Out of their own pocket, not mine. Why don't they go out to NP Dodge Park in Council Bluffs? Why they don't go out to all these other places you're providing? Send them some, you know, prepaid cards? And send them these little braces where they can tear tickets off? Free entry to already existing places? Top Golf, for example? Be a hell of a lot cheaper, wouldn't it? But you probably have to ask somebody for the money to coordinate that program. Is that out of the grant money too, or is that out of my pocket? Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Commissioner Borgeson?
No. No.
Thank you. Anything else on the Fitness Court? If not, yep, go for it, yep.
Okay, come down there and talk?
Yes, please. If you have. Okay, cool, thanks.
We've got a lot of ideas back there. Jake Dingman, I'm a registered nurse at Douglas County Health Center. Nice to meet you guys, especially you, Mr. Kavanaugh. I've worked in your building a few times. So, on the Fitness Court idea, I think it's a good idea, but having grown up in a lower social-economic class, I would see this being more beneficial in those impacted areas where the people can't afford to get into fitness programs, because like you guys said, obesity is a problem in our nation. And why is it a problem? Because maybe people don't have that available access to be fit and don't know how to do it, so how would you go about doing that? I don't agree with sending out to West Omaha, because I live in West Omaha, and like you, Mr. Kavanaugh, I have gym memberships. I can afford that sort of thing. Now, if we go forward with this plan, then, okay, sure, let's put it on 156 where you guys say you want to, but let's also put one in one of those low social-economic classes as well, so that these people can have the opportunity to see what fitness is about. And then, I probably won't have to take care of so many of them. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else on the Fitness Courts? Commissioner Borgeson?
Well, you know, I wasn't going to say anything, but I do have to make a comment that I completely agree with everything that's said about the population base of where the most need is. But I represent the western part of the county, and I can tell you that there is need out there as well. Just because you live in West Omaha doesn't mean you have money. And so, there are people who can't afford the fitness centers as well, and again, probably not in the masses that you're talking about in other areas of our county, especially when you get into the certain areas that we talk about all the time. But I just, I just felt like I had to make that, because it's almost like we're, I don't want to pit different areas of the county against each other. I personally think when you talk about health, that it is, it's the health of everybody. We're responsible for public health. That's the health of everybody in our public. And it's a huge issue, both mental and physical. And so, this again, would be at no cost to our citizens and be able to benefit from it. And again, I would love to see one of these in every quadrant of the county for use by our citizens. But again, it was a concept that, again, I hope people don't automatically throw the rock at and say, "Go away," because I think that there's good conversation to be had in all areas of the county for us to improve our, the health of our citizens.
Thank you. Anything else on the Fitness Court? Otherwise, we'll move on. This was presentation-only today. We'll move forward to our committee discussion slash action. Item six on the agenda. First item of business is finance budget report as presented, alongside also our weekly personnel report from civil service, also as presented. Before we go into exec session, which we do have a need for, I was going to bring up the gentleman who was here on Board of Equalization item. Commissioner Borgeson, is it related to that or something else?
I'm just making a request, because I thought it would have been on this agenda, that we start putting legislative items on the agenda because of the special session, just in case we need some discussion. We should probably be taking positions on bills already, or at least having discussion on them, of what we could live or not live with and solutions for the senators. So, if we could just add that for the time being until, whether it's a week, two weeks, two months, three months of the special session, that we have it on here so we can talk about those things.
For sure. That was, coming up next Tuesday, our positions on certain bills, bill introduction was through Monday, so we're definitely going to be bringing that up at the next meeting. As a courtesy to the gentleman who was here on Board of Equalization Resolution E, we are technically past that agenda item already, but I'm going to let you speak for the four minutes that you would have had at that time, and then, if the board wants to do any future action at a future agenda meeting slash meeting, we could consider that, but I also don't want to get into discussion, because we are past that agenda item. But as a courtesy, since you drove here, I'll let you have your four minutes.
Sorry to cause you guys a bunch of problems. It's been tough with the
This has been tough with the tornado, working day and night. My name's Dave Iskey. I live on 24617 West Center Road.
Sir, I'm sorry. I got some good, sound legal advice, and we probably should reconvene into Board of Equalization briefly, just to hear your four minutes, and then we'll go back to conclude Board of Commissioners, just to make sure we're doing everything properly. So... Motion by Borgerson. Second by Friend, Teresa's Commissioners, and go back into equalization. So, let's vote on that briefly. Sorry, sir. It's just proper procedure here. We'll vote on that briefly.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, so we're back, back into Board of Equalization momentarily. Item E, we did, again, already vote on that item, but you can go ahead and have your four minutes, sir.
I appreciate it. Sorry again. Mine's originally...
I should probably do a roll call, I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Sorry, everybody. Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. And we'll reset your clock as well, because it was ticking. We'll go back to four. There we go. Thank you.
I'm ready. I mean, stop Space Shuttle. Anyway, do I gotta do my name, Dave Iskey, now again?
Just name it now, just fine, yep.
24617 West Center Road, Waterloo, Nebraska, 68069. I'm gonna think, where was I at? Because I have multiple things here with the Form 425, the protest from prior to that tornado on 26. I planned on coming up to, as I say, argue the taxes for the past. Last year, they'd went up about thirty-some percent. I missed, I missed, I looked at the wrong part of my preliminary evaluation. I thought it was something we'd all discussed a couple of years back about holding where I was at because of the flood in 2019. As I said, I got multiple things going on. I'm sorry. I ju, I wanted to go back to where I've lost control of, I didn't see what the right number was. I know it already passed from like 22, the value we'd set was like 524. $524,000 on a 30-acre property I live on, considered agriculture farm. In 2023, the number I missed was actually, the valuation went up to 778. And I only got not even near three-quarters of the flood stuff fixed because of, I'm just one guy, ton, I was in like, I want to say, the top 2% damage from the flood. I know I'm going way back, but this is, this is just huge. And so, then again, I thought, well, I'll come in before this tornado hit and discuss it with you, see if we go back, readjust again. In the meantime, I'd built some equipment to get this problem resolved with all the materials and, and, and I had two and a half acres or another lake in my place, made it seem huge it was. You probably have past pictures. Anyways, tornado took that sucker out, the piece of equipment. Two years, gone. I got hit. I got hit with a tornado. I'm just tired, people, I'm really tired. Suicide kind of comes across my mind. Hate to tell you that over the centercom, but I'm, I'm having a hard time explaining what's going on here because of people in control of our lives. It's gone to 932 now, and nobody's seen what's going on out there. So, when the tornado hit, here we go again. Another thing, I remembered the Form 425. Even my own family isn't into help, they're just down, they're, they're, everybody's just down from this whole mess. Ninety percent of property from flood got destroyed or damaged. The tornado took the rest. It's, it's been five years. I know it sounds like a lot, but it seems like five minutes to me. And I wanted to get this number down from that, 932, beyond even the 778,000. And I'm getting real tired of people saying, "Well, why don't you just sell it? Well, it's not the American way." You know? Veterans out there died for it, not to make it easy. They say it's a disposable world. I like the way this gentleman here presented his case. It was just layman's terms, and it's true. I mean, I've been out there, a lot of health issues come up because of this, fighting for it. I didn't go to war, but them guys did. They went, you know, lost arms, died, not so we can just say, "Oh, just sell it." You know, next guy comes in and cashes in or loses his money. I'm holding my ground, is what I'm doing. And a lot of friends of mine said, "You're kind of dumb, why don't you just get rid of it? You make some money." I know it's worth more than what even probably stated here, but that's not the, the principles of, I don't know what you want to call it, living in Nebraska, being a Nebraskan. I've got friends that are moving to other states because of the taxes now, and it's like, they're good people. I mean, just farm-oriented. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get this all personal, but I just wanted to get this down, where we get some control, because Dan talked to me yesterday, I didn't even know this meeting was coming up at this point. He called through, I was with assessors, a lot of stuff I've been doing, traveling. I don't have the energy and the time, I've got a tornado mess to, to clean up. And I'm not real good at the way you guys do your presentations on the way you're talking, I'm just a country boy. So, you helped me before, a few years ago, I lost control paying attention, my fault, but...
Thank you, sir. And if you could wrap up, we'll, we'll get to some questions for you.
I cry and whine a lot, I guess.
No, you're fine.
I'm down, I'm just down. This is a lot, you guys are really, you're a big show in front of me, I'm a little guy. You're impressive. And so, go ahead and, I appreciate that time, I'm sorry I was late. I'm just sorry.
Thank you for being here.
And anything else I gotta close with here?
Uh, no, no, you don't need any fancy closing.
I don't know if you had a vote on this, or just hear my, hear my complaint, I guess, maybe.
No, we appreciate you coming down today. If you want to stay up, since we did officially go into Board of Equalization, we can have a few questions here, so... Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here. And I really am sorry for all of, I mean, I remember being out there for the flood and seeing the damage and the tornado, and, I mean, I can appreciate what you're going through. I guess I have a procedural question, and so, you went through the Board of Equalization, or did you miss the protesting through the Board of Equalization?
This morning, one?
Anytime. Did you file a protest on what the value was set?
Way back in all these years?
No, just this year.
Yes.
Or this year?
I, I did, well...
And you spoke with the referee?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
It was George, uh, I can't remember his last name.
Teaser.
Teaser, yeah.
So, I, I guess since you have pointed out this property to us, the, so come August 6th, we'll have the whole thing of protest, right? To vote on?
Dan Ash County Clerk, yes.
Which will include?
So...
His?
Well...
Mr. Iskey's?
H- his will be, there's gonna be two items next week. One of them is gonna be the reports of destroyed real property. His will be on that. So, today, hi, his protest was one of eight properties that had both. And we, we needed to take up those protests today before we took on the reports of destroyed real property.
Okay, alright.
And I believe, if I may, Commissioner Borgerson, I think he was talking about, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there is, you know, the assessor's office does the preliminary meeting thing roughly, I, I think you were saying you missed that this year.
Yeah, it's a preliminary, talk to the assessor before we get to you guys at the Board of Equalization.
Okay, I, I get, I guess I'm confused in, in February or June? You missed the February pre-meeting?
Right.
And, but you went to the referee in the June, July timeframe?
Yes, yes, just two, three weeks ago.
So, I guess what I'm, I'm curious as is when the, and this is what's hard, because we have no information that was given fully to the referees. And so, I think it would be who...
You mean, given to them, or they give to you?
Well, both. I mean, we have nothing, basically, other than our clerk gives us some information that today we're gonna be here, here's a couple notes.
I understand.
You know, I guess from, from the time that you had the flood, and, you know, I'd like to know what your assessments were up until to date. And then, when did you protest any of those years prior to this year?
Yes.
And were you adjusted?
Yeah, yes.
And then, what was that adjusted to? And then, what the change was to raise it, you know, 200,000 more dollars when it's still in a partial...
Disaster. Prior disaster to a tornado.
Well, from the prior disaster, right. So, I, I just had a lot of questions on these, which again, it's...
I see where you're lost.
Tough, but...
Do you remember a few years ago, we were upstairs in a conference room?
Yes, yes.
That was when we decided, if you remember that time, maybe not me, but I was like one of the last people there. And I had pictures and stuff, and, I mean, still have pictures. And you asked if I'd come in and filed. I did that a few weeks ago, on the main floor, there was two gals in that, in that one area you go into, to put in your application or petition, and give them pictures, and from the flood, the tornado, other things prior, even just the damage to house that I would, would, would have wanted to adjust from the years before, things that haven't got fixed yet, which I argue off of, but the tornado adds to the problem.
My time's up, but...
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I forgot four minutes.
I'll just do some homework at, when we have more time, rather than just right here at the Board.
And I'll stick around, I've got stuff I can give to everybody, or through somebody to get to you guys. But that was already taken care of, I thought. I mean, from a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Borgerson, who will follow up for more information. Your property is on the list next week for the tornado damage, which that one, I think, will be reduced by $400, or the recommendation, anyway, is to reduce by 400,000. Is that correct? Okay. So, two different issues, but we'll follow up on today's issue a little bit and follow up with you as well.
Okay. Am I done?
Dave, I'll, I'll talk to you after the, after we go, after they go into executive session, I'll talk to you.
Sorry about my confusion.
Oh, you're fine, sir. Thank you so much for coming today. Yes, Larry?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette, 68132. This goes along with what I believe I was saying earlier about the process. Do you have the figures on how many citizens missed the January 1st thing about your personable, personal appraiser? Probably a lot of people missed it. I missed it, and I had to go through later, like this gentleman did. But I'd also like to question, now, maybe it's a little di, different, because he was scheduled to be here and talk about it anyway. But my understanding under the Open Meetings Act, this could be a violation, because you gave him a lot more time without interrupting him than you gave me. And I spoke on the same item earlier. But he's maybe speaking as a person that's been damaged by the city, maybe because they didn't listen to him? Well, they didn't listen to me either. Of course, I didn't have any property damage. But I really don't want to spend taxpayer dollars suing you under the Open Meetings Act to vacate this entire meeting.
Larry, the topic is item E on equalization.
You might be forcing me to do that. Do you really want me to spend taxpayer resources suing you to do something you shouldn't be doing?
Item E on equalization, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just as a side note, for maybe we can have further discussions about, you know, the preliminary meetings came about because Lancaster did them, and they wanted everybody to do them. And my understanding is Lancaster does them a little bit different than we do, and I would like to maybe work with Mike Goodwilly, or whoever the assessor deems appropriate, to maybe take a look at how they do those, theirs compared to ours, because it really has reduced their protests tremendously. And so, I'm just curious as to how they do things different than, than we do. So, just, just a side note, and I hope that we can have that discussion.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we can adjourn Board of Equalization and reconvene Board of Commissioners. Motion by Borgerson. Second by Rogers. Please vote.
Moment, please. Okay, thanks, Commissioners. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We are now reconvening Board of Commissioners. We were at the end of our agenda, we do have a need for executive session.
I'll do a roll call, real quick.
Oh, go for it.
Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh's away for a moment. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. We do have a need for executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation, personnel slash litigation, and labor negotiations. The motion is second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend, to go into executive session.
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh was absent.
Thank you. We will now go into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiation, personnel slash litigation, and labor negotiations. personnel slash litigation and labor negotiations.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes six zero, we're adjourned 11:36 a.m.